We have been prepared for a special meeting. Uh, the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. We've already had the invocation and the pledge, so Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Brooks?
Here.
Councilman Tella Farrell?
Here.
Councilman Butcher?
I'm here.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Green?
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Baldwin?
Present.
The purpose of the meeting is to hear their appeal of the denial of an alcohol permit for United Liquor Fool and Mark. Do we have any requests to speak?
Detective Carlos Bradley, do we need to swear anybody in? Attorney Edwards?
All right, um, any witnesses that'll be giving testimony, please go ahead and stand. We're gonna swear you. Just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
We will now hear from Detective Carlos Bradley, and the SPD representative, and followed by Mr. Hussein and their representative.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here to inform you the results from a alcohol permit renewal inspection conducted on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at United Liquor Bank located at 800 Pier Avenue. Basically, on the inspection, I discovered several concerning issues that required immediate detention. Uh, drug paraphernalia behind the counter, I observed packaging material commonly associated with drugs such as glass pipes, which, based on my training and experience, is, uh, used for crack, crack pipes. Uh, these items were hidden under the register, likely in an attempt to conceal them. Uh, the clerk claimed the paraphernalia was old. However, I reminded them on the previous year, I asked them to dispose of all, uh, drug paraphernalia or anything that can be construed as narcotic activity. But I did give them a warning in 20, last year, 2024, on their inspection, 2023's inspection, sorry. Uh, the second thing was sanitary, a strong unpleasant odor was present inside the store, accompanied by flying bugs, you know, what appeared to be gnats. A large dirty city trash can was positioned next to the ice maker inside the store. Um, the access to the bathroom was blocked. Cooler doors had visible black mold on the floor. Inside the walk-in cooler, it was sticky, um, trash scattered throughout, and mold was observed on the shelves where beverages were stored for, uh, customer consumption, or purchase, sorry. Uh, exterior conditions, trash was thrown across the ground in front and on the side of the building. At that point, I told the owner to correct it and get back with me so I can come out and do a re-inspection. On December the 23rd, the owner came to my office and advised, he had addressed the problems, and he asked when I could return to inspect the business. He attempted to show me pictures on his cellphone, uh, claiming that the work was complete. I advised him that there was no need to show me pictures, I will come inspect in person at that moment. The owner replied that, um, I should not come out immediately because he's almost done and requested another week. After returning from the holidays, the owner came back to the office on December 30th and stated that the work would be completed by the end of the day. I advised the owner that the suspension letter had already been sent and that his permit was set to expire on that day. I also informed him, uh, that he would, the timeframe to address those concerns had already passed, and further attempts to remedy were required to come before our council for an appeal. Uh, he was issued a vol- uh, summons for prohibited acts, uh, Part 10, 102, for clean and sanitary conditions. So on the screen, those, uh, those are photos from the before pictures of me going out to the, uh, business to do my annual inspection. So that's the trash can and the drink, uh, holders inside the cooler. Uh, those are the front of the coolers, so it appears to be mold and dirt. Uh, the far picture on the right, that's where the packaging material and glass pipes were as well. Um, that's packaging materials, those are the small little, uh, apple, call them dime bags, were all kept under the counter.
What is that called?
The little small, like, uh, little dime bags, you can only fit a dime or crack rock inside of. Those small bags.
In the brown bags?
Yes. There are, like the little orange one, there's just hundreds and hundreds of them, so they were just put in brown bags.
It's that brown bag, it's not trash, that's, that's dime bags?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so on today, go back, so on today, right before council, I went to conduct the follow-up inspection at 2:00 today, and I, uh, made contact with the clerk, took a few pictures of some things that still aren't addressed, as far as the, the shelves, um, rat feces, uh, rodents, um, and just some other minor things that I wanted addressed before they called me out to do a re-inspection.
This is today?
Yes.
Can you go back to the other picture? Before that one? What is that?
It's a rat.
It's a dead rat.
And that?
Roach.
You said today, like you went out today?
At 2:00.
That, I'm sorry, that, that picture's from today?
Yes, sir.
I'm a honey bun lover, and that's one of the honey bun rats.
Well, you just saved you some calories.
You'd be eating one each time, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm Mr. Councilman Jackson.
Um, Officer Bradley, can you tell us how long the owner has been the owner of this current store? My concern is that it don't seem like this store would have gotten this bad just in one year. So I'm trying to see if this is new ownership, or how was the inspection in 2023? Did we just kind of give them a little leeway?
2023, I advised them, I gave them a verbal warning, um, where I was more concerned with the, uh, trying to get everybody on board with camera systems. So I emphasized to get his cameras up to date, but I also told him that the store needed a deep clean, and I will be back out to, to make sure that it was done.
And how long has he been the owner of this store?
Uh, I think since 20, I think 2017, or maybe a little bit longer, I have to. Oh, 1999.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Tella Farrell?
Are we required, or do you require any kind of pest control certification? For these stores?
So on the initial, uh, application, they do have to go to LDH and all that, but after that initial packet, so since, once he gets that license in 1999, we don't have a, uh, I guess, a requirement in the ordinance for you to have that certificate.
In your professional opinion, don't you think that would be wise?
Yes.
For us to follow up on things that we give permits for? To make sure that those permits are still, they're still holding up to their part of the bargain?
Yes.
I would also think it would be a responsibility of the owner itself, if you're serving in whatever capacity. Councilman Brooks?
Detective Bradley, do, so, I'm not really familiar with convenience stores. Do they, do they, do they get an annual, uh, Department of Health permit, like a restaurant or bar does?
I'm not sure. Uh, I've reached out to the Department of Health, they hadn't contacted me back.
Because these, most of these violations seem like they would be under the Department of Health instead of a, a police?
Yes.
Matter. I know bars and restaurants get an annual, well, we get multiple inspections, but we get an annual permit from the Department of Health.
Yes.
I don't know about a C-store.
See, I know with restaurants, those are some of the requirements, but, uh, I, that's why I reached out to the Department of Health to see if they could give me a little bit more info.
And they haven't, you haven't heard back from them?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Brooks, you brought us some valid points. I don't want us holding up the liquor license over things that should fall outside of our jurisdiction. I want to make sure that we are tied into the ordinance, but if there's a cleanliness piece in there, you know, definitely elaborate, but I, but I'm mostly concerned with the drug health and that year as a relation to the liquor license, but I don't want to be outside of our jurisdiction.
I'm sure. Is it, is it normal for, uh, to have those, could you pull up the one with the pipes? And, and the, and the, the bags? Is it normal to have those in the store?
No, sir, not. Uh, so that top corner, they call them rose, rose, uh, glasses. So basically, there's little itty, itty bitty tiny rows in there. That's how the vendors sell them to them, and they say they're rose glasses, but they're commonly used for, uh, smoking narcotics. And, uh, I guess I don't have the picture of the Brilo pads, but they're all together. So you had your Brilo pads, your crack pipes, and your baggies. So that's what led me to believe that it's for narcotic use.
What about, you said something about the 10-cent bags?
Yes, those small bags. They're, they don't sell jewelry, so it's not earrings or anything that would be put in there, I wouldn't.
So, Madam Chair? Um, have, have they been cited for any selling illegal drugs?
No.
Okay, but, okay, thank you.
Councilman Tella Farrell?
That was my question, is if we go into a store and we find this kind of paraphernalia in this kind of illegal substance, and we don't have somebody accountable and responsible for that, is there something that I'm not catching there? In other words, why didn't, why was that allowed to continue, or you just tell them, hey, you need to throw that away?
Yes, because, uh, on the, the, I think the prior inspection, so like I said, they had the glass pipes, weren't able to locate the, the bags prior to that, but they can be issued, uh, or issued a summons for the cleanliness in the paraphernalia, but as far as, I didn't find any narcotic on premise. So the way our ordinance is written, it says narcotics present or being sold from that location.
What's in the bags?
Empty, it's just packaging material.
Oh, okay, so they are packed, okay, those are.
Yeah, if it was.
I thought they were full, and I'm saying, what am I missing here about confiscation? Okay, thanks, Chris, that's enough, I'll be laughing. Okay, thanks.
My question is, what are the purpose of the bags?
In my opinion, or?
Yeah, I want to know from the owner, what's the purpose of the bags?
Good afternoon, Ron Michota, 628 Stoner Street, Shreveport, on behalf of Mr. Hussein and United Liquor. First of all, I'd like to offer and introduce into evidence, I, I sent by email to each, uh, councilperson, um, photographs of the property being clean, uh, and I would like to offer and introduce those into evidence at this time. And I would like to note, uh, for the record, that, uh, they've been in business since 1999. They've not had one alcohol-related charge or offense. Usually when we have these cases, they're dealing with alcohol or drug charges or things of that nature. And this is a sanitary issue, uh, in my opinion. Uh, there's been no violation of underage sales. Uh, there's no violation of any ordinance other than this, uh, sanitary situation. The dime bags, as they call them, uh, they can be used for multiple purposes, jewelry. Uh, I just got back from a trip, uh, to the Super Bowl, and I took my medicine and put it in those little small bags, so I wouldn't have to bring my bottles of medicine. Corporal Bradley, who is an excellent officer, if he thought there was residue in those pipes, he could have taken the pipes, had them, uh, checked, and to see if there was any drugs in those pipes. Uh, these people have never been charged with any, uh, crime dealing with drugs. We, we've tried to clean the place up, I went out myself personally last week, took those photographs. I've been in constant communication with Corporal Bradley, trying to comply, you know, with this cleanliness thing. In fact, we even talked this afternoon about getting a pest control company out there to do a pest control. They have, they, they have tried since 1999 to be law-abiding citizens, they are law-abiding citizens. They are law-abiding residents of that particular area of town. So for those reasons, we don't think that, uh, their permit should be denied. I think they're, they're entitled to clean, clean it up and make the council understand that the place is clean. Now, earlier on today, I heard all about trash, I heard about people throwing stuff out on I-220, uh, I-49, and, and we all are concerned about cleaning. This council intimated to those people today, uh, let's get this done, here's our phone numbers, we'll keep it clean, we'll stay on top of it. I can promise you, uh, Mr. Hussein will stay on top of it, and I'm, I'm open to any, uh, questions.
My question is, in 2023, when Mr. Hussein was asked to clean the store, why didn't he?
He did, but it, it's a constant, it's a constant battle.
It's a constant battle for you to be able to keep the store clean when he's been in operation since 1999. And my other question for him, because you said you could use the dime bags, I want to know why did he have those bags?
Oh.
In the store?
He'll be happy to answer that question to you.
Well, actually, he had this, the bag, it's called an oil burner, and it's legal, you can sell it.
It's what?
It's called an oil burner, it's not a crack pipe, that's why police department call it a crack pipe. It is an oil burner, for the smell, and it's legal, you go to any other store, they're selling it. Several stores, they're selling this oil burner.
That's what you have the bags for?
No, we just put it in the bag.
The, the pipe is one thing, I'm talking the little dime bags, that you say, like you put your, you put your pills in, I'm trying to find out why does this store need to have a large supply of those dime bags? What's the purpose of those bags? Are you selling jewelry in the store?
Yes, ma'am.
You are?
Yeah. You talking about the, uh, the plastic bag?
Yes.
We use this for the pipe.
No, 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 no. Can you come to the mic?
We not the only one selling this bag, man, the whole Shreveport, Borgia City.
But what I'm asking, what I'm asking you, but what I'm asking you is what is the purpose of these bags?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you using those bags for?
The purpose of bag, the same way the other stores sell them.
No, 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 no.
They don't sell no jewelry, they got the bag.
Oh, y'all are selling the bags?
Every store in the Shreveport and Borgia City, they sell these bags, I promise. Every store you go to, they sell these bags, we not the only one sell them.
Do you have them on your shelf?
What, sir?
Do you have them on your shelf for sale?
No, sir, it's not on the shelf.
Do you have them in inventory?
Yes, sir, it was small inventory, I mean.
So you've got prices on them, and you're, you're selling them just like any other commodity?
Yes, sir, they buy for the medicine, they buy for different parts, they buy for the jewelries. We have this store for almost 1999, we never had bad record, I mean, we don't got no ticket for the liquor, we had no ticket for the cigarette miners. The store, everything fine, the store was dirty, they find our store is not sanitized. I fixed, so, so fixed the store.
I would say this.
Remoting the store, sanitized the store.
Attorney Michota, is it okay for me to speak to him, or you speak? As of today, Detective Bradley came into your store, there was a dead rat in the store with roaches.
Yes, ma'am, we got that, this is an old building.
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
Hold on. And you say that you keeping this sanitary. Attorney Michota said that if we don't, uh, suspend your license at this point, that you would, uh, that this store is going to be clean. But as of before coming into the council meeting, it's not.
Yes, ma'am, I just probably missed this small place, but I, I fixed the whole store. Officer been over there today, he see everything, it's all been fixed, you know?
How you miss a rat?
Man, we have, uh, we have the rat problem because the building is old, we got the company that got working, they come everywhere for the medicine. And I was off yesterday, you know, today I don't went to the store. So he just find a dead rag, or the, because yesterday the store was closed, he probably dead yesterday.
Attorney Michota, I don't know if they have a rat problem, how they gonna keep the store clean? If he has a rat problem. And he said that he was off yesterday, and you come back today, and this is here, and I, he doesn't know that it's here. Clean and sanitary may not be a big deal for anybody else, but it is for me, in that area, around there. Because this is an area, since I've been on the council, that I have cited and asked them to clean around that area, same thing with the property owner for George P. Hendrix, that is being cited as well, because on that corner is substantial ordering. It is trash from one end to the ex, to the next, to the lot that is across the street. It was just like that as of last week, just riddled with trash, all around that area. And for me, that since you've been a business owner in that area, I don't think anybody should have to tell you to clean the store. I don't think anybody should have to come in and say, I'm gonna cite you because your store is not clean. You know exactly what it is that you are supposed to have, because this is not new to you. But it's just amazing to me that once, after he gave you the warning, still, nothing really, you say that you clean, but I don't know how well, it doesn't seem to be, it was clean that well, but all of a sudden with the pictures that we have, because I did read over what you sent, Attorney Michota, on the pictures right there, that you miraculously did a steam cleaning. That bothers me for the mere fact of that area. Children come into your store?
No, we have no children.
You don't have any children to come into your store? None.
His customers, children come into your store?
Yeah, sometime, I will handle too much kids, they come into the store.
Councilman Brooks?
So, do you have to be 21 to go, to go into your store? Or I think what she's asking, you have to be 21 to walk in your store?
Yes, sir. No. Kids coming in, all them 21, I check ID everybody for something.
Are kids allowed to come in your store to buy candy?
Yeah, sometimes they come, but literally, just, literally, not too much, they don't come. Because the liquor store, they don't come.
So, let me ask you this. Where that white deal is up there, and then those boards broke on top of that ship, is that clean to you?
No, it's dirty, sir, I just probably.
So y'all steam cleaned it, but the steam?
You know, I check, I fixed the whole store. I probably missed this place, yeah.
So that board that just came loose, um, when they was taking the picture? It did, it just popped loose?
I apologize for this one, it would have happened.
Let me ask you this, how much do you sell those bags for, the little jewelry bags?
Jewelry bag is like, uh, $4, $5.
$4 for that little bag?
Yes, sir, $4.
For that little old bag?
Bag.
About what size is it?
They come different sizes, uh.
About, about this size?
Yes, small, medium, large.
For like $4 for that bag? Then you take it home and put your jewelry in it, or, or put your vitamins in it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then how much are the pipes?
They're like, uh, $3.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's just the pipes, they use them for what, you say?
Which one?
What, what do they use the pipes for?
The oil burning. They burn the oil, burn the incense, stuff like this.
Oh, so they just burn some oil, they just?
Yes, sir.
You just put, y'all sell the oil too?
What, sir?
Do y'all sell them the oil?
Yes, sir, we sell the incense, oil, stuff like this.
Okay. And you just, do you, you just sit it around your house, or do you smoke it when you put the incense in it? How do you, how do the pipes work?
I don't know how they work.
You don't know how they work? You just sell, somebody just bring them to you, and you just sell them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the bags too, they just bring them, and you just sell them? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Butcher?
Uh, this is your district, right?
Yes.
I, I defer to you.
Can I ask you a question, Councilman Butcher?
Yes, sir.
Since you said that, if that store was in your district, do you think it would be tolerated?
Um, it depends on, you know, I mean, it depends on how often they go and look at it.
Down by the silver star.
I don't, uh, honestly, I think that probably residents would have complained to me.
Okay.
I mean, if that, if that's a fair, I think someone would have complained, but obviously, nobody is complaining.
That, that's not absolutely true.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm 100% for whatever Councilwoman Taylor wants to do. I don't like to take somebody's license from them, but I do, I mean, if you're selling things that people could eat, and they're coming in, and I, I don't know, it's, it's pretty rough looking to me. I like the pictures that, uh, Mr. Michota sent us better than these.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Detective Bradley? Other than these sanitary conditions, that, have they, you said they have not been cited for any drug?
No, I wasn't able to.
What about alcohol violations?
Um, not within the last couple of years.
So, their license expired on December 31st?
Yes, sir.
What are they doing right now?
Uh.
Are they not selling alcohol?
Not selling alcohol.
Okay. I went by there the other day, they are still open?
Yes.
Do, do they sell hard liquor, or just beer and wine?
Both.
Both? Okay.
And, uh, Madam Chair?
What Councilman Jackson said earlier, I have a, I have a little bit of a problem with a revocation or a denial based on things that I feel like should be under the Department of Health. But.
This.
It's in Chapter 10.
You know, once again, this is council, this is Chairman, Chairwoman Taylor's district.
But that's what's outlined in our ordinance, am I mistaken?
Yes, uh, there, this is all in results of Chapter 10, dash 102, subsection A.
In this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Section 10, 102, subsection A, 8 reads, this is under the section that says, "No person holding a retailer's permit and no agent, associate, employee, representative, or servant of any such person shall do or permit any of the following acts to be done." And then section 8 says, "Fail to keep the premises clean and sanitary, including any parking lot, sidewalk, vacant lot, or open enclosed space within or contiguous to the licensed premises, which is under control of the permit holder by lease, ownership, or otherwise." So the terminology is clean and sanitary.
So that's in our ordinance, so that says that we are responsible for that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, uh, and, Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Jackson?
And, and, I don't like taking anybody's liquor license, I feel like that creates a bigger problem. Um, it's gonna be harder for you to have the revenue to fix a store, but at the same time, our ordinance is clear. SPD went out there today at 2:00 PM and found a dead rat. I, I don't think you've tried to clean it up, um, so it's, it's difficult for me to overturn their decision at this particular time. Um, I would strongly encourage you to, um, get it sanitary.
Councilman Brooks?
Detective Bradley? Are you, this denial, or if they remedy these situations, are you willing to issue them a new permit? Or you, you don't want them to sell alcohol anymore, ever?
That'd be upon the decision of the council, I just went with Chapter 10 stated, that if they didn't learn any compliance, I was gonna have to deny that permit.
Thank you.
So if you didn't bring this to us, you would be violating the ordinance?
Yes.
Do we have something else, Councilman Tella Farrell?
Here. Modern technology is not, my friend. Okay, I understand, um, obviously, the parts of the ordinance that, um, are important to us are very inclusive and very specific, and I think you're on top of it for, you know, your recommendations. Um, I also know that it's very difficult to get a license back once you've given it up, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing that, but I am in favor of giving them enough time to do what is, what is necessary, and, but not the day of council meeting, going out there inspecting. And I would like it inspected, probably, well, I mean, that's okay, that's, that's your, that's your business. Um, how long did it take you to find that dead rat? Plainview?
I was only in there five minutes.
Yeah, hmm, okay. So obviously we have a, an issue with cleaning, but you know, that's, that's the way I feel about it. I mean, it's up to, um, obviously, you know, the council, but, um, you know, cleanliness is a, is a, is a big part of operating any business. And, uh, but I just don't, uh, I don't want to take away your livelihood as far as the liquor goes for something that can be, that should have been remedied by today, but will be remedied by the, well, with approval of the council, will be remedied by the next council meeting or the next date that we set, or the liquor license will be revoked.
Madam.
That's my opinion, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair, may I say something?
Yes, Attorney McShota.
My suggestion to the council, if if permitted, would be allow two more weeks to get this place satisfactory to Corporal Bradley and the chief, and then come back to the council on February twenty-fifth with new photographs and a new inspection and see if, uh, we meet the requirements of the council. I I would like, ask for that opportunity.
Attorney McShota.
It's a reasonable request.
Okay, Chief Wayne. Smith.
Yes.
You were gonna say something?
Uh, we were prepared today, uh, you know, to offer, uh, a suspension of something of that sort and them not lose their license completely. Uh, but in a period of time, uh, we go back and inspect. And if things are okay, then we go from there. But, you know, with that suspension or revocation beginning, you know, when their license expired, we would want it clear, darn clear, that we're gonna come in and do inspections at any time. You don't need to see nothing like this again. Uh, regardless of what they say, uh, you know, I understand your rationale. But everybody's got common sense and know what we're looking at and know why we're looking at them.
Madam Chair.
Hold on one second, Councilman Green.
So Chief, when, when was that license expired?
December thirty-first.
So from December thirty-first up until today is February the tenth?
Yes, sir.
And you all have asked them to do that from December?
Yes.
To February?
Yes.
What is it that's, and you've been in police business for however long? What is it in your scope of thinking that if they wouldn't do it then?
That they gonna do it now?
That they gonna do it now and that they gonna keep it done?
Correct.
It's like, from my understanding, mold is in there. It ain't like they just, did they just find out about the mold today? So if you've said to them, th- these are the issues right here. Um, you need to get this straightened out. If they have not listened from December to February, what make you think they will listen now? My problem is this, and I I'm, I want it on the record so that everybody will know. This only happens in the black neighborhood. This would not be tolerated nowhere else. Out of all the seven districts up here, this would not happen in another district. It only happens, we tolerate, we say, well, we don't want them to lose their license. They knew their license was on, on the line in December.
Correct.
We shouldn't have to come and say, you gotta clean the rats out, you gotta do the this. We, we shouldn't have to baby them along the way and say, okay, now you got this store and you got this. So now what we're gonna do is you, we're gonna give you a chance. On Line Avenue? This wouldn't happen. If we went to Cuban Liquor, this wouldn't happen. It only tolerated in the black neighborhood. I mean, I appreciate business folk, but you ought to do business. I mean, you ought not just, just throw anything up and and want me to be satisfied and say, oh, well, I don't want them to lose their liquor license. Well, if you know that's on the line, why are you doing this in my neighborhood?
Correct.
Why? Why, why is it that if in fact, in some other neighborhood, if I went to Silver Star, I love going to Silver Star in Councilman Butcher's district. Everything is in there is nice. Councilman Butcher ain't gotta go there and say, y'all need to clean this, y'all need to clean that. I love the potatoes, they got the best cheese potatoes in the world. Now, he says the one in Boge is better than the one in Shreveport.
But we need.
But I don't spend my taxes over there in Boge, so I go to Shreveport. But you don't have to hand feed these people to tell them to keep their store up.
That is correct.
Correct.
You know, you don't need the health board to come to my church and say, y'all need to fix this, y'all need to do that. When the fire department come, all of my stuff is in order, my spr- my, uh, uh, fire extinguishers and all of that. So why is it that I gotta hand feed you and say, well, we gonna give them another chance so that they could do this, cause you know, we don't wanna take their life, that's their livelihood. If I know what my livelihood is, it's just like coming to council meeting. I I signed up to come every second and fourth Mondays and Tuesdays, and I'm gonna come to get my check at the end of the day. I'm gonna do that, ain't nobody gotta call me to say, you gotta come, you gotta do this. I'm gonna be here to answer present. So somebody tell me, why are we giving these people so much time to hand fill? Hand feed them, tell me. And and you know, uh, attorney, you know, you're my friend, you you wonderful, you great. But somebody gotta explain to me why? And what other neighborhood would this be tolerated in other than in the black neighborhood?
Correct.
Tell me without making me feel good, without me saying, uh, you pouring water on me and it's raining outside.
We, uh, all of the photos that were taken are not necessarily presented here today, you know, obviously for for time. We also looked at merchandise also. And when they told me that that was baby food in there that expired for weeks, there was baby food in it on the shelf that had expired. It's awful, that is awful.
So do we feel sorry for the babies, for the people that gotta go there or go there to get the baby food? And because I'm sure it's not knock out prices, I'm sure they pay, but they there so they get it. So who do we feel sorry for? The little kids that come in there to get the can and the rats done ate off of it? Who do we feel sorry for, them or them? I mean, who is it that if you go, if if we find out that a rat got rabies and some little kid, whatever, whatever, get bit by a rat, who do we feel sorry for? And and why this is tolerated? Somebody please, don't tell me that it's raining outside and you pouring water on me. Tell me why?
Well, you know, the option that, uh, SPD has is to hold, uh, people accountable for ordinances that we all agree on that are in the best interest of our community. That's what we do. And based on what you've seen here today, that's why we've denied him the liquor permit. Because that is the option that we have based on the evidence that we have presented here today.
So Chief, if I got shot and I tell you that they ain't gonna shoot no more, are you still gonna take me to jail?
Yes, sir, I am. Absolutely.
Attorney McShota, I think you were gonna say something, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I would just like for the record to note that the police department gave formal notice on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is the letter that the chief prepared with Corporal Bradley. However, it wasn't delivered until the twenty-seventh of January. So when Councilman Green said they had all this time, the official notice wasn't until the twenty-seventh of January. And on the next day, I filed the appeal. And and for those reasons, the the time is a little bit shorter than that than than you're stating for the record, uh, Reverend Green.
Okay, so let me ask you this, attorney.
But but.
During that time, were either one of them in their store from, uh, they just, they just came to the store? What date you say?
The twenty-seventh, Your Honor.
On the twenty, on the twenty-seventh, so these two individuals, they've been away from the store until the twenty-seventh? And so they wouldn't have knowledge that their store looked like this?
Okay. I I can't answer whether they were in or out of the store, uh, Councilman Green.
Let them answer?
Yes, yes, sir, but I would, I would tell you this, if you'll give him the two weeks, I will personally make sure, and everybody knows me on this council, if I tell you something, that's the way it's gonna happen. And it will be clean and sanitary on the next council meeting, without a doubt, to the satisfaction of this council.
My concern, Attorney McShota, is I I don't have to worry about you being a man of your word, I already know that. But what what you say will happen. My concern is when they pay you and you don't monitor them anymore after that. The concern for me is that this store didn't just get like this.
It's a what?
It did not just get like this. And they are, they have been in business since nineteen ninety-nine, since nineteen ninety-nine, which means that at any given point during the day, the night, whenever it is that you're there, you're not cleaning your store. You're not doing that, but you're selling products. And if you say that you haven't given us all of the pictures, then guess what? I wanna see all of the pictures. I wanna see all of them. I wanna see every last one of them. So whatever pictures that you have, I wanna see it, I want this council to see it. So you'll be able to make an informed decision as to what it is that needs to happen with this store. So this is what I'm, this is what I'm going to say. That is, you get us these pictures, so we will be able to see what is going to, what should take place here. But you, you gave me this picture right here, I think it's the picture that you sent to me, is that a freezer? Is that?
I think it's a, uh, a container where they, you put coal, uh, products in, like sodas and things like that, I think, I'm not sure.
So is it, are there contents in here?
And and you put beer in it, put ice on it, and they, and they sell cold beers, coal sodas, things of that nature. You see those at, at football games? You see them, uh, in front of a, uh, restaurants on Line Avenue?
I'm talking about this. See this back here, like where you would store meats?
Look like a deli, deli.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an old meat cooler, it's a meat cooler.
So it's not operable?
No, ma'am.
Okay, how long has it not been operable?
I have no idea.
How long has it not been operable, sir? Do you store anything in here? Anymore? All right, Councilman Jackson.
And like, um.
I'll come back.
Um, Attorney McShota?
Yes, sir.
So, um, I disagree with you respectfully. I feel like they've had a whole year to get this together. Um, they were given a warning last year and that warning was for the same condition, it was unsanitary. So I think they had a whole year to get it together, I just think that they didn't take advantage of that opportunity. Um, and I agree with the council, this is only allowed in our communities. Um, and it shouldn't be allowed in our communities, and it's been taken for granted for far too long. Um, their timeframe started last year when they were given the warning. Why didn't that, did not take that warning seriously? Only your clients can answer that. Um, I'm not sure two weeks will be enough. Again, they had a full year.
And Attorney, this, what I was saying to you, I believe what you say. I believe that if, if you were involved in this, be fine, cause you run a top line business. But once, as Councilwoman Taylor said, once your due diligence is over, then there are no safeguards for us that this store will be like Cuban Liquor or like other stores. Even in my district, consumers, they keep it clean, they keep everything in order. And so I I've just reached the point in my life that it ought not be tolerated in my neighborhood if we don't tolerate it in other neighborhoods. If in fact, this was in another neighborhood other than this one, this chamber would be full of people saying, this needs to be closed down. That it would, it would be, it was, it would be just like last council meeting with the squatters and the bad stuff that's happening in Highland. They were down here ninety on the Mew because they say, we can't tolerate this. We can't tolerate the squad, we can't tolerate the bad, we can't. They were not even talking about stores, they were talking about bad buildings. And so therefore, how do I get my brain fixed to say, well, we're gonna give you two more weeks to go in there and sweep and go in there and wash it down, go in there and kill all the rats? I just can't get my brain to do that. Because like Councilman Jackson just said, it had, well, they've had since nineteen ninety-nine to keep it clean and to keep it up. But I I just, I I just don't understand, um, how they would even come here to ask me about my neighborhood. But let me ask you this. Do you have any idea as to where they live?
No, sir.
Could you ask them? Cause they probably.
Where do you live? Two forty-nine Saint Luke Street.
Where is that?
Up forward.
In Allendale.
You stay in Allendale?
Yes, sir.
Where you stay, sir?
Mansfield Road.
Detective.
If if the council would allow, if we would agree to one, uh, inspections once a month, uh, to to alleviate the fear that the store is not going to stay clean. Corporal Bradley is welcome to come anytime, and if the council wants it to, I will go once a month, take photographs and drop them to the council once a month.
Nothing else to do.
I'm sorry?
You don't have nothing else to do, I don't want you to do that.
I I I don't mind, I I want to do.
What I was gonna say earlier is, you know, Councilman Teleferro said, I don't want you to go the day of the council meeting. I wanted to go back on a regular basis to make sure that it's kept up if we do give a little bit of extra time. I I'm gonna defer to what what you want in in the district that you represent. But, um, I don't think this needs to be, okay, we're gonna go and we're going to, um, we're gonna look at it one time and then we're done and we come back a year later. Because, I mean, if it's gotten like this, since he gave you those pictures, Mr. McShota, and he's already got a dead rat in there, that that is concerning to me. And if there is products that are, uh, that are out of date and and all that, that's very, very concerning. So the only way I could approve any kind of, um, any kind of of reprieve here or extension would be that if we have something in there that says they're they're inspected more than just one time and we're not gonna just come back. And I know that puts a little burden on you, uh, Corporal Bradley, but I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know, that's, that's just kinda what my thought is.
And and not, not renewing the permit doesn't close the store down because it's, it's grocery too. So, you know, when Judge, um, Councilman Green alluded to the fact that, uh, we're gonna close it down, that's not, it's not gonna close down.
No, I'm talking about close the liquor down, not.
But the liquor doesn't have anything to do with the sanitary. I mean, you're, you're trying to connect two things that don't even exist, Mr. Green.
Liquor's not in there?
It's in there, but.
The food is not in there?
How do you?
No, no.
Equate the two to together.
Let me, Attorney, let me explain what I'm doing. One is because of the respect that I have for you and possibly the respect that you, all all seven of us have for you is possibly the reason we have this conversation. Because if it were not for you, we probably would have already voted to deny it. But it's because of you, but let, but what I'm saying. I'm not separating the liquor from the food or the food from the liquor. What I'm saying is the whole deal. If 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 I had a vote on shutting the whole store down, that would be my vote today. Because the whole store here again would not be tolerated in any other district other than the black district. Nobody in here can dispute that. Nobody. Not one person can stand up and say, I would allow that in my district. Not one. So therefore, why should I tolerate it in my district? Why should I be the one to have a store like this in my district? I'm not talking about shut it down cause they sell liquor. Probably ninety-five percent of church folk buy liquor. So, you know, I ain't trying to talk about liquor, but I'm talking about the store itself. It's just nasty.
But it won't be shut down. That's the whole point, Reverend Green.
But at least if, if they, if they don't sell liquor, I guarantee you liquor is probably seventy-five percent of their profit. So seventy-five percent of the, the, the pipes and the bags and whatever, that's just a sidebar. They not down here for baby food cause they wanna make sure the babies get the food. They're down here because they wanna make sure that they can sell liquor. That, that's the whole ballgame. If, if, if I'm wrong and they tell me that I'm wrong, I will vote for it to, for them to get their license. But seventy-five percent of their business is gonna be about liquor.
Councilman Jackson.
Attorney Mishoda, is this the only store your clients own?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman. Um, Councilman Green, can I stole my thunder? Um, the money they are making is on alcohol and beer. They can't live on selling honey buns and outdated baby food. So in order to keep selling anything, the store needs to be cleaned up. Um, at the pleasure of Madam Chair, I would extend for two weeks. But I think the issue is the store needs to be cleaned up, whether they sell beer, wine, food, whatever they sell. But we know if we hurt their pocket selling alcohol, it's making a difference. They're making their money on alcohol. So.
But again, the, the point is, it, a, a closed building won't do that community any good. A convenience store closed won't do that community any good. All we're asking for is two weeks to try to satisfy the council. If we don't satisfy you, I understand. But again, I know I can satisfy the council if they allow me to make sure this happens.
Attorney Mishoda, in, in two weeks, they're not gonna satisfy the council because it wasn't in them to do that until they got you. With all due respect, and they did that out of respect for you, because when they came down here, then they knew that they had to come here to this hearing. So it's not gonna do that as, as well, because they didn't have any respect for the store even prior to that, uh, from going in. Because if they did, we wouldn't even be here right now. As you've already stated, the store hasn't had any infractions. We're selling to underage individuals that we can account for at the city. Um, they have not had any other violations that are criminal outside of the store. Have there not been? Do we have any record of that? None. None would like the store that we had before, that we had to deal with. None of those things right there have happened. What I am speaking of from this particular vantage point is integrity and it's community integrity, because they have been there since nineteen ninety-nine. If you say that you're gonna go there every month.
I will, if I tell you I will, I promise you I will.
This is what is gonna happen within the next sixty days, Detective Bradley. I want to know that I'm not going to go over here and satisfy their license at this particular point in time. I wanna see if they're serious about keeping that store clean and the contents on the outside as well as the inside.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we will review that after ninety days. After ninety days, and then we will decide at that particular point if we will reissue their license.
Attorney, so?
Understood. We will see if they take their initiative to go around there and keep that area clean. And there's no such thing as that I'm not gonna go and see it, cause I drive their way all the time and I know that they hadn't been keeping it clean. I'm not only that of going in and keeping that store clean and precise on the inside as well as the outside. I wanna know what they're gonna do about the loitering. I wanna see if they have their cameras, if they're operable. I wanna make sure that that drug paraphernalia is gone from their store. And at any given time during that time, during these particular ninety days, if that stuff is still in that store, then we will not renew that license, and then we will move towards shutting it down completely.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, Attorney, this is not on you. This ain't even about you. I respect you and I appreciate you, but I would not want a burden on you to have to go by there every month, every three months.
I'm, no, 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 no. What I want you to do, I'm, I'm gonna take your word with it. Yes, I do. I want you to go by there every month, cause I want you to make sure that they do. And then after that, when it is not, and when he's no longer and he's going on about his business, then we're gonna make sure, and we're gonna go by there the next ninety days, cause it's gonna be contingent upon that particular point in time if they turn around and they keep a license in there. But all that expired baby food, all of that expired junk that you have in that store, it should be a brand-new-looking store that is just top-notch, because I'm gonna walk in there myself to see what it looks like. Do we understand?
Yes, ma'am. I go on Pier Avenue all the time.
Me too. I know.
I'm, I'm from Pier Avenue. I lived on Pier Avenue till I was seven years old. I, I'm very familiar with Pier Avenue. I have clients who live on Pier Avenue. I regularly visit Pier Avenue. The old Allendale School, we have no control over that.
Correct.
For years, we've tried to clean that area up, but you, you, legally, we can't make anybody move off of that area.
That part right there is on us. All I want is outside their store.
Yes, ma'am.
Across the street, that's not their store, correct?
That's correct.
George P. Hendrix doesn't belong to them. Don't worry, we're taking care of that part already ourselves, as well as the store that is across the street. Same thing. But for right now, what we're looking at is that for the next ninety days, they will not have a liquor license. Wanna see how serious they are as it relates to this, then we will come back with this. But what I will ask of you, Attorney Mishoda, is to give us a report to meet with Detective Carlos Bradley monthly to be able to see what is corresponding at that time. Then you will come back to that council and we'll decide in that particular process what we're looking at if we will go over here and reissue the liquor license. Does that work?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you also very much, cause you know, we have a, an awesome responsibility to the, uh, safety of our community.
Correct.
For the innocent and those that are not innocent. The effects, the health effects of, uh, unsanitary conditions, especially mold.
Correct.
Breathing in and out of, uh, kids and innocent people going into the store can have long-term effects.
Attorney Mishoda, would they give us a mold report on their store as well?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
A mold report.
Yes, ma'am.
Want to make sure that we have a mold report to ensure that the mold that is in their store, that is not hazardous. And also too, for pest control, that they are ensuring that they have pest control. We wanna see the monthly reports on those pest control as well. And whatever cosmetic changes that they need to make to their store to clean it up, to make sure that it's presentable when you walk in there, they need to do that as well, with that significant investment in that community.
Yes, ma'am.
But all that prep, them little bags, at least they can show us an inventory report of what they're doing and whatever oil. I don't know how you blowing oil out of a pipe without using your mouth. That drug paraphernalia, whatever is not legal, Detective Bradley, we need to go back and see what that is and get it out the store. Yes.
What?
Anointing oil. I doubt it.
I doubt it.
Okay.
You gonna make a motion?
Yeah. Okay, so. No, I want the ninety days starting from today. So I wanna make a motion.
You gotta hear the motion first.
So my motion is to, uh, that there is a ninety-day period where this license is suspended with the criteria that was discussed with Attorney Mishoda, with United Liquor, um, that they will give us a pest control report, that they will also provide for us, um, um, pest control report. They will also have conversations with Detective Bradley monthly. Attorney Mishoda will go out here and inspect this store. Yes, we will have a mold remediation report to ensure that this mold is not hazardous. If we deem that and find out that this mold is hazardous, then we will take whatever necessary steps to reconvene to discuss what steps that we need to take in order, uh, for that process right there. But the loose boards and all of the cosmetic works to those stores, all of those things need to be prepared where they will meet. And then also that we will have property standards as well as MPC to come back and re-inspect the store to make sure that the store is up and meets the criteria of city code.
One, one other thing, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
LDH.
Yes.
Let's get them to go back and do a health inspection on it.
Yeah, so we can add Louisiana Department of Health to do an inspection.
I second all of that.
So it's moved by the chair, second by Councilman Jackson and Councilman Green. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh.
Yes. So. I. Your machines. Yes. Yes, suspend their license. Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
This has been postponed to May twelfth.
Say it again?
This has been postponed to May twelfth.
Okay. Thank you, May twelfth. And we'll speak in the interim.
May twelfth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.